All right. You want to, okay. All right. My name is Derek Day and I am the Chair of the Thurston County Planning Commission. And the Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters, such as the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is allowed on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. Again, my name is Eric Day and I'm the Chair. We will continue our introductions here in the boardroom with Commissioner Casino.
Eric Casino, I serve at large, but I live in the Lacey UGA.
Scott Nelson, District Four.
Andy Kaiser, District Three.
Gold Hanson, serving District Three.
Daniel Bomberger, District One.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Bill Fishburne, District Four.
Kevin Pestinger, District Five.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on. I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
Moved. Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the agenda? Mr. Passenger.
Extra time and for good of the order. For what? Public comments.
Bit of the order about public comment. Do you think we need extra time for that or? Just make sure we.
Five extra minutes.
At the end of our meeting. All right, any other discussion about the agenda? Hey. All in favor of the agenda with the five extra minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I mentioned I was only a trade off minute.
All right. Well, our agenda is approved. Next, we'll move on to approval of meeting minutes. I wasn't here, but I folks have had a chance to look over those. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Move to approve the minutes from September eighteenth and accept the audio as the official record.
Seconded. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed?
Not in the city.
Staying as well. All right, the minutes are approved. Next, we will go ahead and move along to public communications. And just so folks know, we do have a public hearing that will have an opportunity for public comment. So if we want to talk about the Martin Way rezone, we should hold that for the, for the public hearing. But if there are any public comments that people would like to make that are not on tonight's public hearing. No one signed up on the sheet. Oh, but I think we've got one, so go ahead. All right, and then for those online, again, the same holds. But as folks, I think, are familiar, you'll have three minutes. We haven't figured out how to turn off the, the please exit stage right music. So you'll get that at the end of your three minutes.
My name's Betsy Norton, I live in Olympia, and I'd just like to make a quick comment on the draft transportation chapter. I also submitted these online this morning. The draft change patient chapter has a few areas I think need to be addressed more or differently. These are primarily climate change targets for greenhouse gases and VMT or. They're nearly completely missing and climate change in general isn't given urgency that it deserves. Multi-modal use and public transport should be considered general purpose transportation options, not just for recreation and commuting perspective. There's little here that acknowledges the changes to plans, design, citing instruction, but the expected experience of weather. Those weren't like fully integrated considerations. And then lastly, business as usual, including support for continued use of Bud Bay as a commercial maritime port. I think should be considered in light of sea level rise, environmental degradation, and the ongoing publicly funded cost of continual dredging. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Any other general public comment from those online? If you'd like to speak not on the public hearing subject, go ahead and raise your hand. All right, well, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comments and move along on our agenda. Next up on our agenda is the General Thurston twenty forty-five update.
No general updates other than transportation chapters coming to you tonight. Everything else on track to have a publicly available copy of the draft comp plan by the end of November. So that they're a sample time over the holiday season and into the next year for the Plan Commission, the community to digest that. And to Betsy's point, really trying to shore up those connections between those chapters that we've had different consultants working on until this point.
Bring all those pieces together.
Yeah.
That is a really big milestone, so.
Fingers crossed.
Okay. Next on the agenda again is you're up again with staff updates, if you have any.
And so we are currently recruiting for the Natural Resources Program Manager and we have reviews scheduled for next week. So we're really excited about that. We also hope to be able to share news about new operations manager here within the next week. It was Jeremy Davis's last day. There were quite a few tears and hugs and I guess escorted trumpeting out the door. He'll be very missed. So in any event, we look forward to sharing that with the Planning Commission. And there's still a number of other interim roles as I still serve as interim director and so hoping to have resolution of those as well within. Oh, sorry, one last one. We Laura Takarsky started our new education outreach specialist. You're familiar with Miriam. This is a new person on her team, came from Pacific Education Institute with a whole background in forestry education. Very excited to have her on the team, so she's been with us for about two weeks now.
Our hold, I can do that one. Just a reminder that there is an open house next week on the bar holdings, UGA swap, land use amendment and rezone. That's going to be Wednesday, October ninth, five thirty to seven thirty at Tom Water Middle School gym. And we will be advertising that as a, as a planning commission meeting. So hopefully folks can go and attempt.
Say that again?
At five thirty. We'll notice it as a meeting in case there's a quorum. We hope there is, we hope everyone comes.
Are you expecting that to be in kind of an open house type forum?
It is, there's no, there's no planned presentation.
Okay.
It's informational.
Yeah.
There's no come anytime, drop in, drop out.
Okay, thank you.
What's the date again?
Next Wednesday, October ninth.
We've been working closely with the City of Tom Water on that, so they should also have folks in attendance.
All right, well, thank you. While we're moving a quick clip tonight and things are a little bit out of order for renewal. So next up on the agenda is our calendar with agenda items and checking our tentative attendance for those. We've got two scheduled meetings coming up, not including that bar holdings open house. We have October sixteenth. That is going to be our work session on the implementation appendix and development regulations. We getting into the fun stuff. And then again, on November sixth, looking at that implementation appendix and development regulations. Do we have anybody who knows they will not be available for one of those?
I will attend by Zoom. Sixteenth.
And I may be doing the same for the sixth.
All right, anything else we want to see on those agendas? All right.
Move to spend the rules and cover good of the order now.
Second. All in favor? All right. Florence.
So on good of the order, I became concerned about our communication with the public about you know, issues that for which a public hearing had been held. I noticed the county commissioners do not follow that process. They have an updated statement they make to the public. It did not include any phrase about limitations on public comment. I looked up the RCW and could not find any compelling reason in the RCW. It in fact seems to be fairly obvious that the RCW says you have to allow public comment at all times, including and at the decision making meeting. I contacted Ashley, asked her to contact our attorneys and find out. I contacted the MRSC and they tended to be in agreement, but didn't have any strong language. I think Ashley has some ideas based on trade offs we kind of have to make. We do have to give some notification about public periods, but she might.
Yeah, so we have. Andy, do you want to share what we learned? So it was actually Andy talked to our prosecuting attorney's office. And then we can sort of throw some options out there if this is something that the commission wants to chew on.
Just in general, there's no, there's no prohibition. There's nothing in state law that would preclude it. It's a policy decision that was many, many, many years ago. What has Ashley said, there may be some options that we can put out there to kind of mitigate the concerns and bring certainty and consistency and transparency to, to the, to the process. But enable more opportunities for that public comment.
My view on it is that, you know, okay, if we do it, if we don't do it, if we all decide we want it. But I think this was something that kind of got decided a few years ago. It's not written anywhere. It's not in our rules of procedure. It's now become formalized in a written statement that the chair reads at the beginning of every public comment period. But I don't know where we're following it off of, what basis we're following it. So I don't care if we decide to do it or decide to not do it, but let's just be consistent how we decided. And I think we should err on not limiting public comment.
Good question.
Does anybody know where this policy came from or this practice came from?
I think it came from because after our public hearing, or at least after our recommendations, what we were doing was closing our record and forwarding it to the BOCC. So I honestly don't see any harm in taking more public comment, but it would not be actionable for us. Public comment, that public comment wouldn't garner any more actions from us because we've already closed our record and sent it off to BOCC. I think that if people wanted to make it, I would continue public comment, that would be fine. But the only thing that could happen with it then is staff could collect it and then forward it with the record that we've already closed to the BOCC, which you would do anyways if it came by email or in any other meeting.
Yeah, Commissioner Casino is, is correct that anything that, right now, anything that comes in after the public hearing, instead of sharing it with the planning commission, we start putting it in the, like what we're going to share with the board packet. So that it continues on, there's still an opportunity for those comments to be considered, just not by the planning commission. One of the ideas we had though was if the commission wanted to, you know, sometimes public hearing or comments come in and there's discussion amongst the planning commission, or there's, you know, someone who was first to comment, here's someone who was tent to comment and they might want to follow up on it to allow for opportunities for that while still being very clear with the public of what that comment period is. We could start noticing our public hearings at a date certain with a written comment period that extends two weeks after that date. What that would mean though for the planning commission is that you would not take final action on the same meeting that you had a public hearing.
Question.
What would be the impact of waiting two weeks to take final action?
Or something like the CIP. For us, it would be fine. It would give us two extra weeks if someone wanted to submit more written comment to go ahead and share that with the planning commission. In terms of our timelines, there's, there are very few projects where the planning commission acts the same night. A public hearing. And so we would just have to build it into our timelines, like the CIP is one I can think of that usually the action follows right after.
Or open space tax programs.
Commissioner Passenger.
I'm not intending to change anything timing wise. We've had many situations where we've had final decisions on the night of a public hearing. We've had many decisions that came weeks or even months after a public hearing. But we haven't told people in the middle of their public comment, hey, you can't talk about that. That's not okay in this meeting. And so I just think that I'm not looking to change timing. I'm looking to be clear about what our definition is. The RCW for anyone's reference is forty-two point three zero point two four zero. It's only like a paragraph long, it's not hard. And you know, I don't know what the implications Ashley's talking about are, regarding missing a notice of two weeks following. I don't know about that. But I do know that we do have a concern and I think Commissioner Casino was mentioning is that if something changes, right? One of the things we've talked about is we can't hear new things unless everything's changed. And we've already discussed it and our staff or we, the planning commission have made massive changes, then we can't hear new comments. I don't think that's true that we can't hear them. We may not necessarily be able to act on them. But that might be fair. So maybe being clear about that.
So what I'm starting to hear more is that it's probably, we want to clarify that people can comment all they want. It's just our opportunity to consider that for any decision making may have passed.
It may have passed for us, but it could go forward.
Commissioner.
I'm on board with, with all of that. And I do believe that, you know, right now, the way that it is, is all those comments are still getting to the board. It's just whether or not are they packaged with our stuff and going to the board or are they getting packaged directly towards the board? And so my preference would be is let people do all the talking and that they'd like, that we close our record when we take our final action, when we make our recommendation. And any comments that come after that, whether they're in our meetings or they're in the BOCC's jurisdiction, just send them on with, with everything else. But I think you're probably right that interrupting anybody in the middle of what they have to say is probably not the best idea and we should just let them talk.
So I had a question, you said, close it, final action.
Yep.
There is sometimes a lot of lag between a public hearing and a final action. And what we are required to do is provide a clear comment period for the public. So that someone coming in two meetings after a public hearing, even if you're saying you're not going to consider it, I think that's going to be really hard to do. That there is opportunity for the whole public to know that we're still open and taking comment. That's my concern is that.
So you're, you're afraid that we have to have a calendar date and we can't just attach it to a final action?
Yeah, because if you think about, if you think about it and you're tracking a project, public hearing closes and you're like, okay, I'm done tracking, I provided my comment, that's all they're taking, they're going to make a decision based on that. And we saw this happen with the board. Someone comes in two days later, or sorry, two meetings later with a new comment and all of a sudden, like this whole thing opens up again. For us, that has a big resource implication because then we are renoticing everybody. We're sending out new web mails. We want to make sure everybody understands that there could be these big changes. So I just, I just full transparency as we, like I want to make every, make sure everybody also gets to be included.
I would be hesitant then to leave it in, to leave comments at the planning commission past the, past the public hearing then. Because I don't want, I don't want us to have to keep on going two weeks later, two weeks later, two weeks later. There's oftentimes where if we can only amend the comp plan once a year, we get into October, November, December. And if we lose two weeks or three weeks because we have a long month or something like that before the next meeting, we might not get a comp plan amendment in in time for the year and push against the BOCC. So I think we should let them talk, but I think we should not act on anything past public hearings.
I think for me, I kind of like the idea of scheduling it so that we don't necessarily take final action until the meeting after the public hearing. And maybe it's just because I'm slow, but it'd be kind of nice to have some time to ruminate on things a little bit before we take final action. And then that would allow for, for additional written comment up until that next meeting. That kind of feels like, kind of feels good to me, that idea.
To me, it makes the public hearing two weeks long instead of one night long.
Well, and to the, the point that was made, if, if somebody speaks and then they hear some other things said throughout the night, it gives them a chance to respond, at least in writing, to something that they may have a response to.
Commissioner Bartlett.
Yeah, I'm, I'm continuously impressed with the quality of the comments that we get from people in, like especially people who come in and present. We've gotten things that have changed my perception on policy. And I personally, I'm kind of with Joel on this, that I've been, Commissioner Hanson on this. I, I like the time to digest these, these comments. And a lot of times there's, there's policy within there that I would like time to figure out how to incorporate. And I know that we usually end up giving ourselves that time, but it'd be nice to, I guess, respect the comments. I guess I do see, I do see value in capping it at like one, two week period rather than allowing it to bounce the way that, that Commissioner Casino was, was dark vision of just being in the public meeting. I don't want to live in that dystopia. So I do think capping it at a hard two week, at a hard like next meeting. Comment is closed by the beginning of, I'd be fine with that.
Mr. Passenger.
I'd be willing to make a motion if you would like. I think I don't think it has to be too complicated. I think there's a period within what we do where we take open public comment in general, and that's pretty open all the time. And then there's a public hearing process and that's a notice of a public meeting and has notification and requirements and timelines. And that's fair and it should follow its process. I would simply, I guess, think like moving to remove a statement under public communication not associated with topics for which a public hearing has been held and removing the statement from the chair to public commenters that they can't comment about something for which a public meeting has been held. I think it's appropriate to continue the statement that says that if there is going to be a county public hearing that night, don't do it in the general period, wait until the public comment period. So I would keep that statement. That would be my recommendation if you want it.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the, the motion?
I would recommend removal of the statement under public communications in our agenda in parentheses and removal of the chair's statement about not being able to make public comment for anything that a public hearing has already been held for. But remaining the statement if it's a public hearing tonight.
Do we need an action for that?
Involves.
Not even in our rules.
Yeah, we can just.
Is administratively a way of doing things.
Yeah, okay.
You're the chair. If you don't want to say it, don't say it.
I, I would like to know how we all feel about it at least. So if we want to take a straw poll. We feel good?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do it that way.
Does that solve the staff issue of how to, how long to notice?
Interesting, wouldn't change.
Public hearing.
We will just probably have to remind you in future planning commissions that although you heard comment tonight, it is not part of the official record for your final action, but it will be shared with the board. So as long as you don't mind us saying that.
And, and does that obligate us to not consider certain comments when taking our final action? That seems tricky to me.
That's my issue with the, with this change is if, you know, say we have our public hearing tonight on Martin Way and somebody comes into our next meeting and we, if we haven't made a decision, somebody comes into our next meeting and says, AB, or whatever they want to say. I think it's hard for us to say, number one, to say, you know what? Yeah, you can stand up here and speak, but we're ignoring you. I mean, you might as well say, you know what, just go talk to the board, which is what, what we've done in the past. And I also worry that, you know, keeping this open for too long. Because yeah, there are things that we have, you know, like the example of CIP at our last meeting. You know, that was, that's, there's almost no comment on it, you know? All the discussion was between us. There's other things like shorelines or the comp plan that's probably going to take us a lot of meetings public hearing to come to a decision. And I don't know that I can say that, you know, if two or three people that have been coming to our meetings now are continuing to come to our meetings and give us some responses to what we're doing. I think that's hard for us to say, you know, well, you know, we've, we're just ignoring that. And I think that's part of the reason that that's been put in there is because it's a fairness, right? Once we've had the public hearing, we've had our public hearing. And for somebody else to come back two weeks later and say, you know, somebody might come back and say, you know what, Commissioner Nelson said this at the meeting and, which is fine because I can respond to that. But if they say that about somebody else that was at the hearing, then don't we kind of have to give that person time to respond? And then, you know, again, it goes back to small things like CIP and open space, probably not an issue. But when we get into comp plan, that's going to be a lot of people coming back and coming back and coming back.
Mr. Passenger.
I like your idea of just administratively doing what you choose. But I can tell you the RCW that I referenced is unequivocally sure and certain that you have to allow public comment up to and at the meeting at which the final decision is made. And we can talk about whether we consider it or don't consider it. I think we have to consider it, but it's unequivocal, the law says you have to allow public comment at that meeting.
It might be a point of specificity, but the decision is not made in this body. The decision is made with the BOCC.
Now, all of the comments do get considered. It's just a matter of whether they get considered at the time of the planning recommendation or the board needs recommendation.
That's the point. We're making a recommendation, we're not making a decision.
Commissioner Bartlett. And then I think we might want to wrap it up. Okay. Um, so it sounds like we may not have a cohesive idea about how exactly we want to do this. I think there's the tension between like the extra time and the certainty that we need for decision making in the public. It's not clear to me that we have a perfect path forward here. Do we want to change anything at this point? Or do we need a? To come up with.
Anything else? You have the freedom and authority to cut people off. We've been pretty gentle about it, in my opinion, and it.
I don't think we'd really, at least I don't think we've really run into it yet since I've been Chair, so.
And I don't think we should make any changes to how we operate our record and recommendations at this time. I don't want to be, if, if we decide that we want to make a recommendation the same time as a, as a public hearing in the same night, I think I don't want to handcuffed us doing that and stretching our calendar out. I actually like getting things knocked off the docket.
I will take that very seriously coming from our docket clearing. All right.
I will say that we have done in the past, whether it's at the decision of the planning commission or just the chair, we have extended the public hearing. You know, if we get something that happens that turns out to be bigger than we thought, you know, you can, we could extend it like to Friday or for a week so that people have extra chance to get written comment in.
Okay.
Rather than close it at that time, if we think we're not going to, you know, if we, if it's something simple and we think we're going to make a decision. if we, if it's something simple, we think we're going to make a decision, obviously, we don't want to extend that, but.
All right, well, it sounds like I think we have kind of a general understanding where we want to go with this and we can essentially just do it administratively and be cognizant of the fact that late comments on something that we've already, you know, made a final recommendation on, um, we won't be able to. But we could still let people get them on the record through us. All right. Thank you. We have no new business. And that means that we are going to go ahead and, um, open our public hearing on the Martin Way land use rezone. Um, we're going to start, um, we're going to start with the staff presentation. Um, and then we are going to go ahead and move to, uh, public comment on the Martin Way land use rezone. So the public hearing opened, we'll go ahead and start with our staff presentation.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the public. I'm Leah Davis from Community Planning. Tonight, we're here to hold a public hearing on the proposed Martin Way land use rezone amendment, which is docket item C P A twenty-three, on the local comprehensive planned docket. The proposal, if adopted, would change the zoning of approximately seven acres at seven, eight, zero, nine Martin Way East. The current zoning is low density residential, which allows zero to six dwelling units per acre. The proposal is to change the land use and zoning to mixed use high density corridor, which would allow twelve to twenty dwelling units per acre, as well as many different commercial uses. However, based on the current code, residential development would not be a requirement in the mixed use high density corridor, corridor zoning district. The Thurston County Planning Commission held one work session for this amendment on August seventh. The City of Lacey Planning Commission held two work sessions on July twenty-fourth and August twenty. The Lacey Planning Commission voted to recommend the site specific rezone request. Staff updated the community, community planning webpage with all available documents related to this hearing. On August fifteenth, a legal notice was published in the Niskali Valley News and the Olympian, and a mailing was sent to all property owners and residents within three hundred feet of the site. On August twenty-ninth, a sign was posted on the south side, which is the residential side of the eight acre parcel. On September seventeenth, a press release was issued through the Board of County Commissioners' Public Information Office. From the comment portal on the website, four residents submitted comments on this proposal. One for and three against. Two comments were received via email, both against this proposal. All in today's public hearing, time is scheduled for a work session. The planning commission will have the opportunity to discuss comments that we receive and perhaps make a recommendation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, and we're going to go ahead and move on to public, uh, public communications. Um, this is a hybrid hearing, of course, and, uh, we're going to start online and then we'll move to the boardroom. Um, but for those, um, who wish to testify, um, go ahead and raise your hand on Zoom. Um, and then we'll have you, uh, we'll have you promoted to a speaker. Um, we have, uh, three minutes each, um, for public testimony. Um, we'll call out the names, um, for people online and in the boardroom. Um, and then we will ask that you, when you testify, please state your name and your address for the record. Um, and then we are going to make sure, oh, we can't give our time to another person. So everybody gets three minutes, um, but we will go ahead and we will start online um, with, uh, Michael Sitrack, it looks like. We'll go ahead and promote you to speaker and then you'll need to unmute yourself. Then we'll start your timer.
Okay, hi, uh, Michael Sitrack, um, seventy-seven oh one Bobcat Drive Southeast, Olympia Wa, nine eight five oh three. Um, I only just have, um, two things I'd like, and that is whatever you do on that particular piece of property that you don't have road into Tanglewild there at that bizarre L shaped intersection of, uh, third, uh, and, and choker, you know, I don't need any more traffic in my neighborhood. I'm in Tanglewild for the last twenty-four years. And, um, my understanding is that you're only going to be putting traffic out to, uh, Martin Way from this, this property. And, uh, if you ended up putting out residential with that, your, uh, do you have any thoughts now about what kind of traffic control you're going to put there? Just, uh, just a stop sign? You know, people making lifts out of there now, it's not so bad because it's very limited traffic. But you add a whole bunch more, it'll be time to add another traffic light. And everybody loves traffic lights on Martin Way. Um, I, I, I personally enjoy people complaining about lack of left lights, you know, the blinking arrows, that, that entertains me. Anyway, so traffic pattern I am concerned with. Another thing, and this is just a personal one, and I would just love for whoever develops that piece of land on the south side of the land that they grow a whole bunch of trees so it blocks the view of, uh, because, you know, it was a gr- nice looking piece of land with all the trees there. But, um, it would be really cool to hide whatever gets built there and we don't have to see the, uh, see the nothingness of, you know, no trees. I know that's kind of a weird sounding thing, but I've been here since seventy-five, so being nineteen seventy-five, that I kind of like the trees. That's, that's it, that's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, is there anyone else online who would like to provide public comment? All right, well, with that, we'll go ahead and move to the boardroom. Um, we're going to start, um, with Mr. Pettit and then we will move on to, next up will be Roland McGill.
Good afternoon, Bonnie. Oh, excuse me, good evening, planning commissioners. Appreciate y'all being here. Uh, I, of course, have been involved with this particular Martin Way rezone as I represent the property owner. And, you know, one of the things, because I get involved with a lot of projects, planning is about moving forward. It's all about moving forward. It's about getting ready for the time that's coming where people need to have homes or we need to deal with this, the sewer systems and, and the traffic systems and the transit systems and, and everything that's available. The city of Lacey, this property is very unique and you see it in your maps. But it's very unique in the fact that it's real only access has been off of Martin Way. That would be continuing. But one of the things which I'm going to note here is, is that there's a difference between just general changing of a zoning, which is the use in the future or current or future, and the difference between a project, uh, the requirements that are in a project. And one thing that many people don't know is that project under any current zoning process of the mixed use would require a buffer with trees and different things blocking all around about fifteen foot barrier basically around the back portion of the property. That would alleviate a lot of people's concerns that they're not getting their privacy. Change is hard. I actually grew up, and when I was growing up, Martin Way was actually part of I five. And the stoplight was the only one between Canada and Mexico. Used to walk over to the E B grocery store when I was a little boy. Can't do those things nowadays. But this project, if you change it, we suddenly increase the opportunity for more housing for people up to a level of, uh, twenty units breaker, multi-level buildings, more housing that reduces costs. If we go forward with the pro- if the project is allowed, somebody may do that in the future. They may use it for other purposes. This is already in full alignment with what's happening completely up and down Martin Way through that particular section. It meets exactly what the intent is within the city of Lacey. It has sewer, it has utilities. It is not going to be a burden. There's no foreseen situation where they're going to end up going into Tanglewild. So I encourage you to move forward, approve it, send it to the Board of Commissioners and they can listen to other people's comments also, just like they can, you can here.
All right, next up is, uh, Roland McGill and after that, um, Michelle Slater.
Roland McGill, and, um, we are opposed to this project, fully opposed to this project. I'll give you some reasons why. Um, we live at two four two Kingham Street Southeast and have for the last thirty-five years. Um, it abuts to discuss property that would, that they have the intent to, uh, change the zoning. And, you know, we've enjoyed the trees, trees are always a big, um, the privacy is always a big thing, uh, when these kind of projects come up. And we also are realists and understand that at some point, there is going to be change. The zoning is going to be changed, you know, things are going to happen. So, but we didn't think it was going to happen quite this drastically. One of the main, one of the main things that concerns us is the prior actions that were taken on this piece of property. We have zero faith that the current owner would follow any of the expectations and recommended actions from the counties or any other jurisdiction involved in the property. That was very evident, the original legal acti- illegal activities that took place before this request came in, including clear cutting, grading and use of the parcel and what the parcel was used for, which was a huge, um, enlargement of a trailer business. And suddenly, you know, first of all, it was a few trees that came down to protect a couple of buildings. Then it was a thinning, then it became a full clear cut within a fairly short amount of time. Um, so we don't have any kind of faith that, that, any good faith that these, the, the, uh, proposed people proposing a zone change would follow. It felt, it almost felt like that this group was just, they were willing to take a flap on your wrist, some citations, just to be able to get to this point, um, to be able to put this forward. Um, the neighborhood we live in is very diverse and has, in regards to demographics, a very fluid population. A lot of people don't even know, they don't see any signs on the side of fences. They don't see the, uh, notice of, of zone change. So it's, it's a very, they don't have, they don't, they're unaware of the impact these kind of zone changes will have on their lives and their activities. Um, a new hundred seventy-seven unit apartment complex is built, um, diagonally across from where the component buildings are taken. That's, you know, three hundred more cars potentially, more people. We already have zero, almost zero sidewalks in places where it's where kids and adults working, walking to work. You couldn't go, it's a tall street over there and so you just add to it. Whether it's not off of Martin Way or not, I don't have faith that that can happen either. But I also, you, you guys have a call.
All right, next up is Michelle Slater.
Um, I already sent a letter, I'm, I should, so like, you know, that's got all of this. The only thing I wanted to make comment on was a lot of the summaries on from the commission and from other people is concerning the number of dwellings available with the low density, it gives a max of forty-two, high density, a max of a hundred and forty. The issue I have with it is by having it zoned higher, you're allowing commercial to be put into that area, which is going to give you zero. So I just, the emphasis being put on numbers really bothers me that nobody's looking at the zero. Um, eight public speaking, that's why I wrote a letter. I just want to also say there's a lot of emphasis even on the Martin Way corridor study that puts, uh, a lot of emphasis on the improvement of the appearance of Martin Way and forgets about the neighborhoods and the communities behind Martin Way. So when you do make a decision, remember there's a lot of us that live behind. And it impacts us, especially me. I live at seven, seven oh six Third Avenue Southeast. I am next to the building and I share, or next to the property and I share a street front with property. So it came from trees to nothing. So I just wanted to make sure people understood that it affects us behind in the Martin Way corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, next up is Rosetta McGill. And then after that, we will go to Betsy Dorn.
Good evening, thank you for your time. I am not good at public speaking, but, um, Leah emailed, uh, my husband and said that oral comments are fully considered, so I just felt like I needed to say something. I grew up in Tanglewild, um, I've seen the progress that's happened. I remember walking, when I was in kindergarten, walking up to the school and all of the, the left side was just all wooded and we saw that, that cul-de-sacs and the homes and everything being built and, and progress, that's progress, and that's a good thing. It's a good thing for people to have homes to live on, live in, um, and we're not opposed to it, we're just opposed to the high density commercial portion of it. I, I, I still am kind of confused how this, this company was able to do everything that they did without any kind of permits or, or the, the proper steps, basically. I called the county when they first started demurring the, the buildings and, and some of the trees. And I was informed, well, you're allowed to remove some of the trees. I said, no, this isn't some of the trees, this is like all of the trees. He's like, you're cutting the whole eight acres. And he, he, he never had a permit to do any of that stuff, even though I continuously called the county. And so as I mentioned, they, they, it's like kind of, um, you're really concerned about how the process is involved. I'm sorry, I'm just really nervous. Um, our neighborhood as it, as, as, um, has seen a lot of development and just with everything that, all the growth, um, a lot of traffic comes through our neighborhood to cut through so they don't have to do, deal with that, um, the traffic sites on Martin Way. Um, so we have, oh, um, very, you know, our team through our neighborhood. And I'm, we also have a lot of people that walk through our neighborhoods. We have zero sidewalks. I mean, I guess maybe there is a sidewalk up to Lydia Hawk up the hill. That's the only thing I can think of, there's no sidewalks. There's curbs on Kingham Street, which I live on, and, um, people like walkers or wheelchairs or strollers. They're, they're pushing them in the street because they, there's no sidewalks, they can't walk. I almost hit a person in a wheelchair twice that night because backing out of the driveway, I didn't see him. So, um, I just want, as Michelle said, to consider all the people that live behind Martin Way and all the effects that, um, a, a high, especially a high density commercial use would affect even. would affect even so on the property.
And then, next up is Betsy Norton, did you, did you, are you good? Okay.
You signed up on the wrong sheet.
Perfect. But anyway. Anybody else who'd like to provide public comment before we close the hearing? All right, I also want to say thank you for all the folks who went outside of their comfort zone to give a public comment today. We do really appreciate it, we, it's, it's really useful and we really, really appreciate that.
I'm going to change the sound to ooh la la.
All right. Well, with that, we will close the public hearing portion of this and that will move us along to our work session on the Martin Way land use amendment and rezone.
Okay, first, before I start my PowerPoint presentation, I do have a map, an aerial photograph of the site to address Michael Citrex comments. This, you can see the, the north part is up, abuts Martin Way. And this is the south part down here that is on Third Avenue and that, that funny L-shaped intersection that someone talked about. We have run this proposed rezone by Public Works Transportation. And they have confirmed that there would be no egress-ingress at that point. There would be the, at most, an emergency, like fire truck access for any type of building or development that's done on that site. So I just wanted to lay those concerns.
Do you know what type of, I know it's in on if it was commercial or housing, but what kind of policy would be for landscaping in there?
I haven't read the code to that degree yet. If, if, there is a big requirement for a buffer, buffer landscaping.
There's a buffer requirement, I just didn't know if there was a.
But our packet said something about fifteen-foot landscaping and fencing.
I don't know the other details about the landscaping.
Sorry, clarity question. Ms. Davis, you mentioned there would not be any ingress-egress, but that there would be a fire truck. You're saying it could be accessed.
Well, usually they put bollards up there that the fire department has lock and key to, so that they could get a fire truck in there in the case of an emergency.
That was my question, so that will be a part of that.
That's, you know, it depends on what's proposed, there's no proposal, we're not reviewing any type of development on this. But that, we ran by the rezone through, through the transportation department and those were the preliminary findings that they made.
Just a question, is that the details in the memorandum in our packet from Todd Mason?
Yes, that's correct.
It explicitly says, Third Avenue may, may be used for emergency access only. Third Avenue Southeast might be able to be used for secondary access, but would most likely entail the developer constructing roadway improvements on Third Avenue Southeast and Kingdom Street Southeast. The determination of allowing access on what roadway improvements would be required would be evaluated after submittal of a proposed project and associated traffic impact analysis. And that, the access from Martin Way would be right in and right out only.
Yeah, you have that memo in your packet, I think, it was in with the Stanford board. Any other questions before I move on with a brief presentation? Okay, so we're talking about the Martin Way land use amendment and rezone. In today's work session, we'll review the consistency with the Lacey joint plan, the Martin Way corridor study and Thurston County Code, answer any questions you have, and hopefully receive a recommendation tonight. I just wanted to put this map in, I think this was in the staff report, but I wanted to show everyone what the mixed-use high-density corridor is along Martin Way there. It's the pink zoning designation. And you can see over here on the right is the, the parcel in question that is currently zoned low-density, zero to six.
Your share might not be.
It's, it says I'm sharing here.
I think you're sharing the image, not the screen.
Okay. Stop, I have to stop sharing, okay. Share again, okay. Sorry about that. I thought, I thought we were good.
We are, yeah.
Okay, my, my screen doesn't look like yours at all, okay. There now, let's try that. Okay, so that, those are our goals tonight. Here's the map with the Martin Way corridor with the mixed-use high-density in pink and the parcel over there on the right. Any questions about that?
Yes.
Okay.
This is all UGA, where does the city limits begin and end on this west?
I think it's around Marvin. It's been a long time since I actually looked at that map, around Marvin and Harpinder? Yeah, around there.
You go in and out of the city three times going down Martin Way.
Yeah, it's a complicated. Yeah.
The same area we've been trying to work with Lacey to incorporate.
Wouldn't that solve a lot of problems?
It came up last night in the joint meeting between Lacey City Council and the board. And there was agreement that this is a high priority area that we should work on together. Yes.
I know that Tanglewild neighborhood very well, often many times, and I share concerns mentioned by the public. But how in heck did that high-density apartment development get allowed? When was that approved and by whom?
I don't have the answer to that.
City or county?
That would be the UGA county.
Has to be both.
Yeah.
Doesn't fit the neighborhood.
But that was actually, that was rezoned to high-density?
I'm not familiar with that, I don't know.
Can't imagine it started in high-density.
It doesn't look like it does. Island of high-density in there. I don't know the history on that.
Thank you.
So the way that this is in alignment with the Martin Way corridor study, the mixed-use high-density corridor or MHDC could encourage the desired development and high-density housing in a mixed-use setting. Based on the analysts that did the Martin Way corridor study for us, the consultants, they said that this section of the corridor is likely to have the greatest growth in the foreseeable future. It would increase the potential, potentially increase the potential for affordable housing. And it may increase the character and sense of place. And the Lacey joint plan in section two point four, under Development and Land Use Strategies, the county has committed to reviewing the mixed-use high-density corridor and updating, updating that zoning designation for a real focus on mixed-use. Because as I said in my opening, there is no requirement for residential. So if this gets changed, it could be all strip mall again, because until we change our code, so we've committed to updating our codes so that there is a requirement for housing. For the housing goals and policies in chapter three, this could possibly increase affordable housing along the Martin Way corridor. And for the transportation infrastructure, infrastructure, chapter eight, it is a high-transit corridor with bus, frequent buses, I think every fifteen minutes. And so building more high-density residential there would be ideal for that, that type of transit.
I apologize, but I'm frustrated with the changing terminology. I don't, bullet point two says increase affordable housing, but you're clearly saying may increase. And we all know that's, at the best, may, it's probably not. But would we please be consistent in using terms like may? And it's definitely just a may?
That's a goal.
Yeah, this is a goal that's stated in the Lacey joint plan. That's true.
Yeah, it's not staff.
Yeah, it is a goal, yeah. Yeah.
Their language.
That's the goal, it might accomplish it.
It might.
And then, so I want to note that we talked a little bit about updating the zoning code for the corridor. That feels pretty consequential here. And is there a kind of a plan or a process or a timeline for updating the zoning code for that?
Our goal is to have those updated, we have to wait until all of the housing chapters get done for the cities to update the UGA codes. Because the new House bill regulating density is going to be implemented. So we're talking about early twenty twenty-six having all three UGA development codes updated with the, the new housing goals from this state.
So we could be in a situation though where if we approve a rezone now, we don't update the zoning code, they get a, you know, complete permit application in, it's vested, and it's a strip mall forever, even though the underlying zoning changes.
Well, the earliest that this would be adopted, just given the timelines right now, is the end of twenty twenty-five. Because the board can only update comprehensive plans once a year. And the package for this year is already set. We're, we're having, we're struggling to even get the ones that.
We're not going to use this in for twenty twenty-four?
The board wouldn't?
This, this is part of the comp plan update, the periodic update. And it probably is not going to get rolled into it this year, we just don't have time to get.
We don't have time to get on the board's calendar.
The zoning or the code update?
This, the zoning. The zoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when was that timeline, I'm sorry, I was.
The timeline on this, mid twenty twenty-five, end of twenty twenty-five?
It will, it'll have.
It has to be, it's a comp plan, yeah.
It's going to have to be the once a year.
And then we're going to try and get those development codes for the UGAs through as quickly as possible after that. We'll have them all prepped, you've seen some of them already. And we'll get those going and get those adopted as soon as we can get that done after the comp plan update.
Commissioner, just so we're clear, we're not approving anything, we're making a recommendation as a board. And I think if we're making a recommendation, we could make a recommendation contingent on that change in code. Because ultimately, I think all we're doing is giving our opinion to, to the Board of County Commissioners. And if our opinion is, if it had this part with the housing, it would be acceptable. I think that's better than saying yes or no, if, and leaving that as a giant question mark, that's just my thoughts on it.
I, I think just because of the way the packaging and stuff moves through the, the board, it does leave a risky window.
Could we, we could still include the contingency or at least express that in our opinion to them, in our motion?
Commissioner Casino?
I wanted to, the, the way that I understood that, the, the whole impetus of this rezone was part of a compliance agreement with the county that was signed in twenty twenty-two with Director Cummings. And so part of that compliance agreement was that, that, that they make application and move forward with this. So, so I don't think that would, first of all, I don't think it'd be fair for the county to come and say, you have to do this to be in compliance. And then say, but we're going to hold off on you. So I think at the very least, we have the duty to act on this as quickly as we can. I am a little dismayed that this isn't going to get through on this year's comp plan. Especially since we, I know I expressed concerns earlier this year about delaying this until October because I was afraid that it wasn't going to get through. So I'm not sure where, I'm not sure how things backed up right there, but I'm sure we're going to hear a lot about how losing another year on this project, especially when it was part of a compliance agreement that was signed with the applicant. That's probably above my pay grade, but it doesn't feel very good. And it feels like we're telling somebody that they got to hurry up and do something, but then we drag our feet. I could see where somebody could make that, make that argument.
So I would say that we haven't dragged our feet.
No, that's fair, that's fair.
The, the board has changed their policies on how far in advance they want to see materials before they take any kind of action. And given those timelines, we just, we won't be able to make it through the board's process.
So, so if this use was, we don't know what the future use is going to be, there's not, there's not a program, there's not a, there's not a plan on the table yet. But we do know that the current use is trailers and trailer storage. And part of that compliance agreement was getting through this reason so they could use all the land for trailer storage. If we don't get this done this year, are they going to be able to use that land?
I'd like to clarify that, because just changing the zoning does not give them permission to move their trailers onto that. That changing the zoning would allow that use, and then they have to go through a public hearing special use permit with a hearing examiner. There, this is a first step in a very long process. And they have to make sure all the violations are cleared up. It's, the, the mistake was violating the permitting laws, that's where it also.
There's the people that are here that just testified, I think they need to hear that.
Yes.
Okay, so this property had a lot of compliance issues. Our compliance office under CPID got involved in it. There were a lot of violations on this property. The owner of the property was told that they had to correct those violations before anything could move forward. So, just so that you understand that.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and then the thing is that compliance said, if you want to move forward with this, you have to submit this application to the planning commission, has to go through the process. And that does not mean that it's going to be approved. Okay?
I appreciate that clarification, having a voluntary compliance agreement is offering a pathway, it is not guaranteeing an outcome. Right. So I don't want the planning commission to feel at all pressured, this is a public process. That voluntary compliance agreement is just acknowledging that there is a pathway available to the landowner in this case, if they want to expand the existing use from the north end of the property to the south.
There is a process after this goes through, if a high-density is approved by the planning commission for this particular property, that they have to go through a public hearing process and a
Well, they have to.
Special use.
Yeah, they, they have to clear up all the compliance issues.
Right.
They have to go through a special use permit, public hearing process to get a permit to expand the trailer sales onto that.
Which will identify what it is they want to do with the property and how they're going to do it.
Yeah, the other part of that is, because the land was clear-cut, there is a development moratorium of six years on that property. And, and to be clear, we're not allowed to even change the zoning with that development moratorium on that property.
And I think for the public certification, what they need to understand about this is the county, this is a UGA, which is outside the jurisdiction of the city limits of Lacey right now. However, we've been pressuring the city of Lacey to incorporate Tanglewild into the city limits because it's so bifurcated, that whole area down there, like Commissioner Casino said, just Martin Way goes in and out of the city limits three times, which is causing a lot of problems with you for sewer and streets and lighting and all that kind of stuff.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, okay? So this process, if it works, I mean, this planning commission has worked with the city of Lacey two years in a row on trying to get Tanglewild incorporated into the city limits. This would go a long ways to helping that process, I think.
Mr. Passenger?
I agree, I think you probably have more to present, I definitely have more questions, but I want to hear your.
Okay.
You want, before you move on, is there anything you want to add to the, like, round out the conversation or are you going to work five if you want? You're, you're professional.
I, I, I think I'm ready to move on. Read the public comments, I think they say everything.
All right.
So as far as the Thurston County Code goes, it, density is an issue. The low density is zero to six dwellings per acre for a total of, potential of forty-two housing units. In the MHDC, a maximum of twenty dwelling units per acre for a potential of a hundred and forty-plus, a wide variety of commercial uses. And I'm going to stress this again, the current development code will not necessarily add residential capacity because it's not a requirement at this time.
When we talked privately about this after a previous meeting, you had mentioned this is sort of a baseline, but other things like missing middle or other things that may come into play might change these numbers and these numbers might be higher, is that accurate or are these the higher ones?
I don't think that was me.
Okay.
I don't, I don't recall that conversation.
There's, I know that that has come up, and I am trying to figure out exactly where it came from. But yes, the low-density numbers are. But uh, yes, the low density numbers are going to be higher as a result of all of the updated housing legislation.
Yeah.
Yeah, until, until we get all of that sorted, we don't know that for sure. That's a good point. So there are two paths for a recommendation. Maintain the land use and zoning as it is with the low density residential. Or amend the land use and zoning to get the MHDC and then. So as of noon, there were five written comments submitted to staff, one in favor and four opposed. And then I got a late one, which I brought a copy this evening, and you received that. So there were a total of six public comments. Um, and that's everything for me tonight. I'm happy to answer lots of questions.
So just, just so I understand this, what we have, it it almost feels like a mirage of potential housing. We have this shimmering prospect of maybe, just maybe, we might get more affordable housing here. But it is indeed that, and we have no guarantee that this is what the developer will decide to do. Once they navigate the substantial obstacles that you've outlined, just in terms of the special use permit, which can take years to get. The situation with the clear cut and the mitigation and the six-year moratorium. So that mirage gets less and less real and farther and farther away. As we understand all the ramifications of this. You're nodding, so I'm, I'm just trying to confirm.
That's correct. I mean, the potential here is really exciting as far as affordable housing and increased housing capacity. It is, the reality would be a lot different. The timeline of the reality could be a lot different.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You had mentioned uh, that the six-year moratorium also made it illegal to rezone it within six years?
Yes.
So is this proposal in illegal? I'm just trying to get clarity on that. I don't wanna make, take an action that's against law.
Well.
Well, we're not the ones who would be approving. It would be the board, but still. I don't wanna recommend we break the law. How does that sound? That's a reasonable question, right? Look into it a little bit further, just to confirm that detail. So we are, we are unsure if our recommendation would be to break the law if we approve this.
The recommendation would be on. The board would make the final decision if that that statute actually applies or not.
I did say recommend.
There's, there's our code requirements, and then in the case of um, the tree cutting, there's the state requirements for. And so a moratorium doesn't show up if you look at E N R's website, and so just seeing whether there's a disconnect there. Or between what was supposed to be filed and what was actually filed.
Yeah, so for the public certification.
Hold on, I'm sorry, point of order.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, sure.
Oh, um, Commissioner Bartlett, then Commissioner Fishburne, and then.
Yeah, I I just really wanna emphasize what Chris has uh, brought up, which is that we have been kind of talking about two very different things. Like intersp- like interpolated, there is what we all would love to see this property be. In terms of like the the resource that it could provide for the city, the resources that it could provide for the neighborhood. We talk a lot about that potential, and I agree with that. Like, I would love to see things that we could do to encourage that. And then there's anything that this developer has done or intends to do or has said that he wants to do, and that's just a completely different. Like, that that is that reality. I, I don't. I, I love, I love world building. I love the these, 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 th- this uh, this beautiful future that we're creating on this property. You should definitely get into some property management to see that through. Uh, but in the meantime. The actual recommendation before us is questionably legal and is completely unrelated to all of the good things that we wanna do with it.
Yeah, the point of personal privilege, I say, you know, it's good that you're here, cause I guess we are in the business of world building. But uh, we should also recognize that this is just a microcosm of everything we do with long-range planning. We're just talking about a parcel here, uh, but everything is a mirage of something beautiful on a land. Um, so I think we shouldn't lose sight of that.
We should remind ourselves of that regularly.
Yeah, um, in the dreams. Yeah, it's our, it's our best attempt to control the future, and it's all change management. Can't always get what you want and bestly plan and so on and so forth, but we'll go ahead and resume our.
So I will um, set aside my need for orderliness in figure two and maintaining that yellow for just a second. But yeah, I think I echo what Commissioner Bartlett, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say Sandy Kaiser. Um, have already said, which if there's no minimum residential development currently required in Thurston County code. Then yeah, this is, it feels like we're chasing a pipe frame. So is there a code? A zoning code that we could recommend or that we could take advantage of?
No, it has, it has to go on the app, it has to go by the application.
So there's, there's no.
I don't think so.
A zoning code that we could recommend.
You're, you're, you're trying to get a residential piece. I would say trying to have the joint codes, the joint code update. Um, align with the adoption of this is probably the the best bet. Cause I don't think all of the codes for Lacey, and Leah can correct me if I'm wrong, are quite a ways behind the city of Lacey's codes. And so I don't think you can pick a different one, other than the low-density one that was created last week of the joint.
Well, I don't think that that's in line with the application, which is what we're considering right now, right?
Um, it's a legislative decision, and so the board.
Well, we haven't done any analysis or any public comment. I mean, it would be a whole new process.
Yes, it would be a different.
Couldn't be done through this process.
Yeah, I'm looking for an option one A, basically.
Yeah.
A new process, just meaning different noticing, not necessarily new. Essentially becomes the board, like a board.
Has to get on a docket, I think, and it has, doesn't have to start all over.
Um, if it's less, we 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 can talk about, but if it's less intense, it can, it can be part of an update. We talk about the machinations of that and reach out to the landowner, if that's something that you're interested in exploring. But I don't think it'll get to a different minimum density.
It does feel like, less and less like we're gonna wrap this up tonight.
Yeah, I just want, you know, I was gonna say exactly what you just said, Commissioner Bartlett. We got Commissioner Fishburne on this. The thing about it is for the public certification is, is this property owner has taken severe. Consequences for the actions that he took on the property. That's the bottom line. And it's gonna be years before he can do anything with it. And this whole, the comp plan that we're putting together right now, the county has serious issues with residential housing. Uh, which we are all thinking that maybe this would be a good place to put residential housing. Uh, but we don't have a choice in that. That's not our choice. All we can do is recommend a particular type of zoning. And then the property owner has to submit that for recommendation and approval several years from now. So I just wanted to say that, cause there's a lot of people upset about this whole thing, and a lot of people don't understand the process. So hopefully that was, that alluded some of their fears.
I just wanted to go back to this idea about whether or not we need to um, incentivize with building the development code. To make sure that residential housing does get built on this land. It seems like there's concerns that this might just turn into something other than than more homes, and we'd like to see more homes. And I would, I would just suggest that if something other than homes was gonna be built on this, an apartment complex or duplexes or something like that. They would already do that with the zoning we have now. So with the zoning we have now, we have zero homes there. And the only way we're ever going to get homes there is if we actually give it the appropriate zoning. And I think that when we, when we look about, or when we look at all the planning that we do do, and we are trying to get more homes in the county. This is exactly the right kind of spot where we can put it. We don't have a lot of control of what happens in the cities. We do have some control about what happens in the UGAs, and of course, the cities taking over jurisdiction would solve all these problems, but since they're not doing this. This is one of the best ways that we actually have an opportunity to, that maybe we can add a hundred and fifty homes in the area. Right on a bus line, right on a major arterial. I can't think of, you know, we, we talked about, we don't want to be ruining the rural. The rural culture or character or anything like that. That's why, that's why we wanna put density here, where all the infrastructure is and everything like that. Add into that, that this is, this is finishing up a compliance agreement, so everybody can actually start moving forward with their lives.
It doesn't finish it up. It's the first step in a long process.
It, it, it's a step forward, and and without doing this, the step's not being taken. So um, I think that it it would be very hard for me to say no to this. Everything about this looks like it would be a good deal. Other than the concerns that people might have about how the development will impact their adjacent properties, and those are real concerns. But this is the UGA. This is where this kinda thing is supposed to go.
And it's also notable that those are the kinds of concerns that you address when you actually have a development proposal.
Yes.
And it has to go through the permitting, and it has.
Not during zoning.
Commissioner Bartlett, Commissioner, or Commissioner Bartlett, sorry.
Two B names, it gets, yeah, I get it. Um, I wanted to echo what uh, Commissioner Casino said. I think that we should evaluate this simply on. What kind of zoning it is, with the understanding that any further development or a proposal would need a special use permit or further action. All we're really saying is that makes sense to be high dense, mixed-use, high-density. And I think that makes a compelling case for potential annexation by Lacey. And despite the developer's bad acts, it seems like he's paying the consequences of those actions. And I feel like it would almost be negligent on our part not to approve it. Hopefully with the understanding that by the time any such development would be greenlit, maybe the code would be updated to have some more incentive. Towards housing, since it sounds like he's got several years before any such building could happen anyway.
I'm really torn over this. I started out with, you know, I'm on Commissioner Casino and Howerson's side in terms of. Annex Tanglewild, and then you can have everything you want. But we know that's not exactly how this will happen. These maps just don't exactly make sense. I've been to this property multiple times, taken photos, looked around. Um, I've driven up and down the street. You look at this map, all of these properties along the corridor. What is it, seventy percent vacancy rate? Like, we've got barber shops randomly here and there. We've got the biggest popular newest thing there is pop shops. We've got uh, construction places, former uh, arms dealers. Uh, we've got, they're all turned into water supply. We've got a bunch of different businesses along here. Um, we've got a corridor, we've got this bizarre anomaly. Um, the zoning perfectly matches the corridor. This is an ask for a change that's not part of that actual corridor. If we were to say that we were widening that entire corridor, and we're changing the zoning all along that corridor. Um, to increase development of housing, that would probably make sense to me to say, all in all, this should be what we have here. Because we have what everyone has set, bus routes, transit stops, you know, density, et cetera. And, but to just say we're gonna do this for one property really stands out as bizarre. Uh, the local property owners have clearly shown concerns about what has happened there and how they would be impacted by this. Um, those are legitimate, real concerns, I think, from their locales. And you look nearby at other things, like the new Serenity Development along Carpenter Road. It's a large number of apartments in there, still being built, more being built, clear cut to hell. Uh, and we have no say over that. That's in the, in the city. But I see the changes in the traffic patterns, and I see people now flying along Carpenter Road and slamming on their brakes to pull in there at the last second. And like, you put a lot of volume in there, and now parking spaces for over a hundred-plus vehicles, it's, it changes the dynamic. And if all of a sudden people have to live with that right next to their single-family homes, that's a big change. And so I specifically, I've talked to a lot of people, I've talked to staff about this, I've talked to other commissioners about this. I care about this issue, and I've reached out to the MRSC. Every time we're supposed to evaluate a single zoning update or ordinance map change or ordinance change. We're supposed to have a criteria, like a checklist of A, B, and C, and the state generally requires them to be some things along the lines of. Have the conditions on the ground materially changed? Is there a compelling new reason to have this of all the neighbors changed? Uh, what has happened since the last time you created this zoning? And we don't seem to admit any of those requirements. It's still the same. This has been the same. This has been, it was been mentioned earlier. This used to be I five, with the only stoplight between Portland and Canada. This is not a new thing, what this is. And it's largely vacant, and there's not a bunch of housing development where there clearly could be if we wanted it right now where high density is. They have businesses all along there. The businesses are changing and evolving and should continue to grow to be more residential. But there's no promise or guarantee of that, and I don't feel, without a checklist, I checked here with the county. Basically, local cities and jurisdictions like counties are supposed to codify what those requirements from the state are about. If you're gonna make it out of, these are called the citizen-initiated request. Um, for those types of zoning changes, you're supposed to show that you meet some of those requirements. The conditions have changed, that things are different. There's a compelling community need. I noticed on the application, a lot of NAs for not applicable. And we don't yet force people to go back and fix all those answers yet. I know we're trying to get better about that. This also shows us our county problem we have about code enforcement, that it's on a complaint-first basis. And then maybe we'll send someone if it's convenient or something we care about. I've know about a lot of complaints that have been made that the county has not followed up on. And so, you know, we've got this bizarre thing where people seem like they're doing things after the fact, getting a slap on the wrist. Are they fine? Are they not fine? What's the truth? And I don't see the logic behind, this is essentially, we talk about government takings. This is essentially a government giving to take the density from low density to high density. I mean, forty-two units is not nothing to sneeze at. If we could get forty-two units on here, that's not a terrible thing. But to say we're gonna jam it up to over a hundred and forty for no compelling reason, I can no longer support this. I don't feel like anything has justified that type of impact to the community unless we have the city annex. This whole area provide the appropriate services and things like lighting and sidewalks and all of that. And um, then let's expand the corridor a little bit. I'm supportive of that. Uh, I'm not in support of these one-off changes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Bartlett, Commissioner Casino.
Uh, yeah, I, I agree that I would rather, I would rather tackle this particular part. I understand why this particular parcel is being brought up to us right now as part of a process, uh, as a part of a resolution process. But given the timelines for development and approval overall, I would be much more comfortable dealing with this property. As part of these kinds of expansions that we're talking about, that we would like to see something that's an actual cohesive vision for the area. If we're talking about increasing density, like, great, let's talk about increasing density. Let's make that part of a public process. Like, let's have, like, let's get an actual engagement on, on that larger vision of the entire space. Rather than spending our resources negotiating a dispute between uh, hostile neighbors. Uh, a hostile neighbor action. Like, that's, like. I, I guess I understand why it's being brought to us, but for ourselves, I don't think that there is, then, there's, there's no, there's no timeline on this. That makes it relevant for us to have to deal with right now. I would rather deal with it as part of a larger process. Like, it's gonna be six years before a decision can even be made, like.
Commissioner Casino.
I, I just wanna address a couple of points that were brought up, and the first one being, it is almost a spot zoning issue. Where it's a single parcel that we're looking at, at rezoning, and I think the counter to that would be, it's because it's the only one that's undeveloped. And that's why we're doing it. It's, everything else is developed. We're not gonna go through and tear down a bunch of single-family homes just so we can up the density. So we could build more apartment complexes than the rest of Tanglewild. So this seven acres, this is the last piece along there. And which also means it's our last opportunity to have some high density there to, to add those kinda things. To the point about having a comprehensive plan or vision for a lot of this. Um, I would suggest that we do. It was the Martin Way Corridor Study. We've looked at these kinda things. Um, it's, it's been thought about quite a bit, to the point that the other municipalities and the other governing agencies are on board for it. And uh, for that reason, and the ones discussed earlier, I would, I would uh. And uh, for that reason, and the ones discussed earlier, I would, I would. Want to support this result.
I just add, uh, all this, this does is it just adds to the uh, the mixed high density housing area. It doesn't change it. It's all around it. It just adds that seven acres to it. The front part of that parcel is already in it. And like Commissioner Casino said, it's, it's an opportunity hopefully to get more housing and it's gonna be a while before we do. To wait for the comp plan to come around. I don't, that's not a doable situation. Cause this is gonna go forward to the Board of County Commissioners, whether or without our recommendation. So what recommendation do we want to make?
Davis, you mentioned in previous presentation that you were gonna look into the multiple compliance issues on this property. What can you tell us about those?
Well, the clear cutting was a major compliance issue. Grading and filling was a compliance issue. They did that without a permit as well. And then.
How much and what was it?
Well, the um testimony from the neighbor, say a hundred and ninety five yards of fill. And that was after they uh actually signed up for the voluntary compliance agreement. So they continued to. Violate their agreement after that.
Is that part of or separate from the tearing down of structures?
That I think the structure demolition was permitted. It was the clear cutting that wasn't, and then the grading and filling. And then there's a another topic that is um related. Before any um development can happen on this parcel, it is within the Tacoma Smelter Plume. And there's a requirement from ecology to have the soils tested for arsenic and other heavy metals. Before anything is done, especially turning the soil. And that was not done. Those permits were not gotten. Those tests weren't done. And so there's some concern about. That problem as well. This is not in the highest um concentration. It says it twenty to forty parts per million in this. Particular area. But we don't know what that requirement would have been. Because of the soils weren't tested.
Was that concern specific to the site or just for the area in general?
It covers a lot of South Puget Sound.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's.
It's not like this is a contaminated site. It's everybody all down here has to do that.
Yeah, and I have permitted other projects uh in this Tanglewild area over the years and. Um, one of them that I did, I remember the mitigation was to turn the soil. That was the only mitigation required. I don't know what the mitigation would be on this particular parcel because the tests weren't done. But the neighbors have grave concerns about having all of that dust. Raised up without having those tests and knowing what's in that soil, and I don't blame them for that. You can, you can Google the Tacoma Smelter Plume uh maps and you can see where all of those are. It's easy to find.
Seems like we're running on steam.
There, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay.
Uh, move to recommend adoption of comprehensive plan docket, item CPA dash twenty three, Martinway land use. And rezone amendment from low density to mixed use, high density.
We have a second.
I'd second that.
All right, discussion. I think as I stated before, if there were an option three or one A or whatever we wanna call it, where there was some. Zoning that we could adopt or recommend to ensure that that were used for housing. Then I I I would support that option. Uh, given what we've heard tonight and some of the concerns with other properties along that corridor. To me, it doesn't make sense to approve option one.
Richard Bassinger.
I also share those concerns and how much as I want this conceptually, I don't want this individually. And I in fact would be prepared to move the opposite of this, so I I'm like, I'm gonna vote on this.
And just for clarification, if there is a six year development moratorium on this.
Yes.
Um, we would be very likely to have uh updated development codes. By the time any development was allowed. Yeah, fingers crossed. Um, and that. So with the moratorium, does that preclude them from applying or just being approved?
Being approved.
Okay, so they could actually apply under the current development codes and be vested under the current development codes. Even though there's the six year.
It depends, it depends on what the um proposal is. Some projects aren't vested for long periods of time. Some projects are.
Yeah, okay. And then it would also depend on whether. Driven by state or local requirement.
I have a question clarification. Um, so the six year moratorium and then this the special use permit. Those run concurrently or are they in sequence?
We haven't confirmed. That a moratorium was filed and we need to figure out whether it was supposed to be filed and just didn't get filed. But there isn't one on file that we know of in A six unless Leah, have you found it?
Well, it's usually just a notation. Did you find it under?
Code, yeah, if, we haven't been able to find it in the permit tracking.
And it's important to note, if there's a, if there's a moratorium on it, it started at the day they cut the trees down. So it's not starting today. It's not starting the end of the process. It started in twenty twenty one. I think is when the trees were cut.
But then they apply for the special use after that.
Special uses, is that development or is that?
They applied for an after the fact forest land conversion with a SEPA application. That's been on hold for about eighteen months because I. Because then they discovered the violation or or I I, you know, it's. I'm not involved in it. It's years and years of communications between the permitting department and the client. It's very convoluted. A lot of staff has come and gone, so um. It's, it's just been on hold for a long time. And then uh they entered into this voluntary compliance agreement and I guess this was part of that. If you change the zoning to something that would accommodate the trailers, then we could work with you. But that may be when they discovered the clearing. I I don't really know that timing. It's, it's. It's all complicated. When, when people don't follow the permitting process, it becomes a terrible rat's nest.
What I'm trying to understand is the timeline we're talking about and then. The, the idea that there might be a change in zoning.
I would advise the planning commission not making a recommendation tonight. I wanna understand more about the moratorium. And I think you all should know more about the moratorium and timelines and we can check in with DNR to see if they have anything on file. And then also understand the difference between whether a moratorium blocks development permits, whether they block legislative decisions. But I think I need more information. In leading CPED before I'd feel comfortable with the planning commission making a recommendation. That this is a pretty big new piece of information.
Stop is making a recommendation. Does the commissioner want a motion to table the conversation?
I think I would entertain it, but I would like to hear from Commissioner Casino first.
I I just wanna point out that. This body's interest in. Increasing housing supply has been a high issue. And if the first opportunity we have to actually. Add a hundred units or more, or the potential to add a hundred units or more. We shut down because of a complying issue that's not really in our wheelhouse. And will get mitigated somewhere along the way. And we have tons of time for that to happen because this, this change won't even take effect for thirteen, fourteen, fifteen months at the earliest. I think says that we're not actually serious about our housing issue and wanting to put more homes into the community.
My questions that I wanna answer on behalf of the planning commission is what kind of actions. Can local government take when there's a moratorium in place and whether rezone falls under the umbrella of development? And so.
I understand where you're coming from. I just think the compliance issue is separate from the zoning issue. And compliance issues, especially when they're not tied to a current really proposed project are kind of. That doesn't really inform us on what's going on either, but what does inform us is that we don't have enough homes in the community. I think we all agree, we don't have enough homes in the community and our first opportunity to even. Have a possibility at adding a good chunk of homes in the very spot that they should be in, we're turning down. And I think that's probably a mistake. If, if we can, since we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, if we voted, there's nothing to stop us from bringing up the motion again, correct? Or no?
Be in a different session, just.
In a different session, so if we took a vote and it failed. And we got more information at the next meeting and we motioned again, we can still take up the same motion again, yes? I would just say instead of tabling it, let's vote and see where we're at.
Yeah, I. I'm not sure that we can bring up an issue that we've voted on in a prior meeting and a subsequent meeting and.
They don't know the definition of a session. It could be the whole term.
Yeah, so I, I think we might run into a problematic problem there, but procedure issue, I think a. Motion to table would simplify us. That was gonna be my question is, could we just move the table and then? Assess it later. Yeah.
I move to table to a date certain of October sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Any, any uh? Or discussion, sorry. Yeah, discussion on the motion to table.
I guess I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna vote for this just because. I wanna know about the compliance and the uh forest land stuff. Cause I mean, if we're, if we find out that zoning shouldn't be done. Rezoning this shouldn't be done because of a moratorium, then. I don't like we should do it.
That would change your recommendation.
But I mean, you know, or what, I'd also be interested to know, you know, when did the moratorium start? And how far down the road are we looking? You know, can they, can we or can we not do a rezone right now? When can they? Apply for and or get a permit to do whatever code they wanna do. So, I mean, if they will, if they have to wait six years to get a development. And I would argue, since this isn't gonna go through the board till next year anyways, us waiting two weeks or even a month. Isn't a big deal.
Bishop Bartlett.
Yeah, I just, there are, there are some specific points that I want to. I want, I want us to, like, questions that I want answered before I can vote yes on this, before I can vote on this. Um, the timeline that Commissioner Nelson brought up is definitely one of those. Like, how much of this is concurrent? How much of this is sequential? Where are we at within that process? I would like a clear timeline so that we know we can match our actions to it. Um, I would also be interested in. Given, you can utilizing that timeline. Uh, ways that we can pursue what Commissioner Fishburne brought up about an idea that would. That would be true to the spirit of what, what we've said we wanna do, which is increase housing. Um, that would actually be doing that rather than doing something that technically could in an alternate universe where Spider-Man was the other Spider-Man.
All right, um, any more discussion on the motion to table? Who dates her? Sixteenth. Okay.
Could we have a little bit more time to research? Sorry, if that's okay. If we're not under a time pressure, we might not.
Motion to table to a date certain, so November sixth, twenty twenty.
That working? Okay. All right, um. Let's go ahead and get a, our yeas on the amended motion. We don't need a second. Okay, all right, um, all in favor of the amended motion?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Okay, we've got that motion passes. So we will. Bring this up. A later date.
Commissioner Baumgartner, myself, and Commissioner Casino.
I would like to um clarify what information we need from staff, give them very clear direction on what information to bring back we could.
So I think we had questions on timeline. Whether some of it is concurrent, whether it's running, whether it is or isn't, like we did or didn't trigger a moratorium. Looking into that development moratorium and also um. Any implications for the legality of a rezone at this point? Is there anything else? We wanted to clarify.
You want any more information about what City of Lacey has in their development regulations? A joint code.
It would signal what a joint code update would likely look like. Give us a little bit of clarity there.
Also said that we have a little bit of our own homework. Maybe this is collaborative. You can suggest that like we wanted to look at what some alternative, what some alternatives or additions would be regarding zoning.
I think it's a develop, it's really a development code question, cause it's a specific request. And then what happens on that parcel is a function of what is proposed and what's allowed under the development code. So I'm not sure that we would even have the.
I, I think it's a mistake for us to. Contemplate about the notice of violations and those kind of things, because this is a zoning issue, not a, a building issue, not a plan issue. But if the planning commission is going to use the controversies. Associated with this project as a reason to not move forward with a zoning change. I think it would be appropriate for us to actually see the notice of violations, the applicant's response. The prior hearing examiner decisions that happened in ninety seven. And um the voluntary compliance agreement and the action that's been taken with that.
I would agree that if we want to use that as a criteria, I know from my perspective, um, it's really about. Making sure that the development codes are going to be the development codes that would actually be more likely to get us the outcome that we want. When that property was eligible to be developed, not necessarily. Whether or not it is a. Not using that as a. Criteria for whether or not I would be in favor or not.
I guess what, one of my concerns is, is if there was a, a notice of violation, but it was never adjudicated because it went into a voluntary compliance agreement. That probably precluded that there was ever a moratorium, or maybe there wasn't a, or was or wasn't, and we don't know that. And maybe that voluntary compliance agreement was entered into just because it was the path of least resistance, but he was never saying that he actually did anything that was wrong. I don't know how many trees were there, if that was a forest conversion, or if that was just knocking down trees in an urban area. I don't know any of that for sure. I, I don't like the idea that a bunch of trees got cut down, but I don't know how that violation actually happened and what was going on with it. So if all of a sudden we're gonna scuttle this whole project because we have some bad feelings about some trees getting cut down, that we don't really know. The nature of the violation, I don't wanna do that. Especially since we told the app, the county told the applicant, you have to. This is what, this is what we want you to do. We want you to do this voluntary compliance agreement. We want you to apply for this rezone. But now, we're gonna kinda hold all these other things against you that we said we weren't going to.
I, I will just say, I think we should be really careful about the kinds of considerations that we. We bring into our decision making on what is. At the end of the day, a zoning request for us. So I think we should be just really mindful as a group um and careful. Because I think it could be really easy to slip into something that. Because I think it could be really easy to slip into something that, um.
It's outside our jurisdiction. I think you're absolutely right.
Outside our jurisdiction, so I think we should be really careful, and I think there are still some questions, um, related to those violations that would. Be, uh. Within our purview.
I just don't know how that's going to impact any decision we make. That's, that was my point.
Yeah.
I I I'm just researching whether we do have a decision to make. And 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 I wish that was easy, I mean. But I I just don't feel confident that I can cite the RCW or the code provision needed to ensure that. There's a decision to be made, that's all.
I've heard a couple of allusions now to. Postponing a decision based on the moratorium, the moratorium or the reasons for the moratorium or whatever, but I just wanna be clear, at least in terms of. My concerns around the moratorium. For me, that's going to, uh, maybe elucidate a timeline. Against which we could possibly develop additional coding.
Exactly.
Yeah, so just wanna make sure, you know, folks on the board, people listening at home, um, that if there's some consideration. Or some thought that the reason we might be forestalling this is because of, we wanna see this moratorium enacted. And we wanna delay the development, and we don't want more housing. That is certainly not the case in this commissioners. Commissioner Coster.
I, uh, agree with those concerns, and I also share with the chair that. That my reasoning is, reasoning for saying no on this is not remotely limited to just this one thing. It's all a lot of things.
I I just wanna add, when I brought up whether making this decision was illegal, I was told we weren't making a decision, we're making a recommendation. And then what we were just told by Ashley was that we're not sure if we can make a decision, and it feels like we're.
Process.
A decision cannot be made as a result of our problem.
I'm, that's all. I, it feels a little bit like we're. Playing both sides of that. And it's unclear for me, as a. In my first year as commissioner, when I'm. Old, sort of both sides of that, I don't know. I like clear instructions.
Yeah, we're, we're making a recommendation, and I think the question is whether or not the recommendation that we're making is something that is legally inactable.
I- i- is it a valid application that we should be processing? I guess is the more clear way to put it.
Okay, gotcha. Oh, so it even goes up straight.
I don't know.
I'm not.
But we should be concerned on that because we have told. We have made recommendations to the board of county commissioners before on things that we know they're going to say no to because they've had guidance from the PAO or from. Bob Ferguson sending a letter telling us that we can't do certain things. We made the recommendation, so I'm not really concerned about the legal aspects of whether or not our recommendation. Would meet muster. I think that's, okay, the OS office to decide, and probably already did. Probably wouldn't have gotten this far if they didn't.
A reminder.
Yeah.
But, um. So do you guys, do you all feel like you have what you need to go dig in, bring it back at a date certain? All right. Say that a little louder.
Do adjourn? I get it.
All, all in favor?
We felt the transportation right now.
I know me, I know that.
Consultants meeting. Please, please, like, let them.
Okay.
Participate. Sorry.
This is just a presentation, correct?
Yes.
Presentation.
We're not making a recommendation. That's correct.
Well, there, there's no official, it's just kind of a thumbs up. Are we on the right track?
Gotcha. So, all right, I'm gonna keep comments inside.
You can always type them and send them to us. The.
Trying to make it funny. Cause we're not good at keeping comments inside.
But I could withdraw my motion.
I, I think so.
I'll withdraw my motion, all right.
Trying to get in.
Thank you, boys, too. All right, go for it. Take us away. Uh, we're moving on to work session twenty three, Thurston, twenty forty five, the transportation elements. Good evening, commissioners. Andrew Baum with Community Planning. I am joined by Daniel and Kendra from Bear and Pierce. And Becky Khan from Public Works. Daniel will be providing the presentation, and I'm just gonna pass along the hand to run through it.
Good evening, everyone. Have to make sure all my different pieces of my microphone are unmuted. Uh, good evening, commission. Uh, wanted to run through some items for the, uh, Thurston, twenty forty five comprehensive plan update. Specifically talking about the transportation element, uh, update tonight. Uh, real quick, we'll go through, uh, please do feel free and stop me if you would like, uh, as we go, but, uh, otherwise I'll run through this, uh, quickly for you. Uh, tonight, we'll talk a little bit about, uh, why and the need for the update. Uh, a little bit about the requirements, uh, some preliminary goals and emerging ideas in transportation, uh, planning and engineering since the last update. Uh, talk very briefly about the current plan and the new plan and then next steps. Uh, so first up, the Growth Management Act, uh, obviously requires that, uh, your comprehensive plans be updated. It's now every ten years. It used to be every eight years. Uh, for transportation, really focuses on encouraging efficient multimodal transportation systems that reduce greenhouse gas emissions and per capita vehicle miles traveled. Uh, based on regional priorities and coordinated, uh, between county and city comprehensive plans. Uh, the county's current element, uh, really works, focuses on connecting communities, providing routes for commerce, and creating opportunities for recreation and exercise. Uh, and it's, it's obviously a very expensive system to maintain. Uh, it's the most valuable asset, uh, the county, uh, owns and operates, just because it's, it's spread out over a wide area. Uh, and there's a lot that goes into our transportation system. Uh, the transportation helmet needs to address, uh, everything transportation related, highways and roads, transit, bicycles, pedestrians, rail, air, and policy, all related to that. Uh, so it's really not just looking at, uh, roads and streets, uh, that many people may, uh, think of first when they think of transportation. It's really focusing all, or it's, it's looking at the entire transportation system as a whole, uh, including rail and air, uh, and all of those other modes. New requirements, uh, that the, uh, that the plan needs to address. Uh, these are largely driven by changes in state law. We'll skip over the ADU stuff because I heard, uh, you've heard from that. Uh, from the county's housing consultant on that a few times. Uh, but did wanna talk a little bit about the climate response and comprehensive planning, especially as it relates to, uh, transportation. Uh, so, good news, bad news. Thurston County is amongst the green counties, who is actually the first up to have to implement this new guidance. Uh, the PSRC counties, Pierce, Kings, Snohomish, and Kitsap, they all actually got a little bit of a pass for now. Uh, as they do not have to address it until their mid-cycle update due in twenty twenty nine. Uh, but Thurston County, along with the other green counties, does have to address it in this update. Uh, do, uh, no longer in twenty twenty five, do in, uh, twenty twenty six now, or sorry, still do in twenty twenty five. Got the wrong county. Uh. It really, the, the major things that relate to transportation as far as HB eleven eighty one are about GHG emissions and per capita vehicle miles traveled. Uh, for those not familiar, greenhouse gas emissions, uh, relate not just to transportation, obviously. Uh, the Thurston County study has said that transportation is about, about a third of your overall, uh, GHG emissions, but that is still a sizable chunk. Uh, and the, then per capita VMT is essentially how many pe, how many? Miles are people driving or ta, uh, taking a vehicle per capita, so per person, uh, on a daily basis. Uh, really looking to reduce the, that per capita VMT, that doesn't mean that our VMT is gonna go down as a total. Uh, that might actually still go up with a population growth, uh, in Washington State. But really that you're focusing on reducing each person's impact. Uh, and that could be different things, like taking transit instead of, uh, driving alone or taking a carpool instead of driving alone. Uh, using, uh, biking or walking, there's all kinds of different things that can, uh, help reduce that VMT. Few requirements from the state, uh, for the GHG and VMT reductions, they can't just shift VMT and GHG to elsewhere in the state. So in other words, you can't say not our problem, it's our neighbor's problem. Uh, you can't, or or you do need to focus those reductions, uh, on overburdened communities where they are more likely to see. Uh, air pollution effects, uh, and things like that from higher, uh, greenhouse gas emissions. And you cannot restrict growth to achieve the GHG or VMT reduction targets. Uh, on the bottom here is, uh, an example from Washdot of a few different strategies to reduce VMT. Uh, and kind of their average relative impact. Uh, so as you can see, there really land use is the highest by far. It's more than double the next, uh, highest item. Uh, and it really just means the, the more dents we develop and the more, uh, people are able to take other modes, whether that's transit, walking, or biking. Uh, instead of driving alone, that's really gonna have the biggest impact on our overall GHG and VMT impact or, uh, emissions. You also, uh, there are a few di- different things on, uh, active transportation, so really just making it, uh, more clear that that needs to be included in your analysis. That was already included by most jurisdictions, uh, even in the last round, uh, so it's a, it's almost more of a definition change here. Or wording change to be a little more, uh, inclusive by using active transportation to include, uh, walking, biking, and rolling. Uh, it also, uh, just requires that you make sure that you, that's included in your existing conditions reporting. Your ADA transition plan, uh, this is something, uh, the, the federal government has required as part of the ADA, uh, or Americans with Disabilities Act. Uh, that was first passed in nineteen ninety. Uh, state law now just requires that as part of your comprehensive plan, that it needs to be adopted as, uh, by reference as part of your transportation plan. There's a little bit of updates on state facilities funding. Uh, there was always a need to talk about state facilities and their level of service within your jurisdiction. Uh, but there is now a requirement that you also include a discussion of how funds will be raised to address identified needs of the transportation system. Uh, including those state-owned facilities. Uh, we expect that will be more than likely a bit of language about, uh, different funding mechanisms, uh, and things like that, but not actually that the. The county is needing to identify where that funding should come from, per se. A few more slides here, or just one more slide on eleven eighty one, uh, uh, and I realize we've got a error on the title here. This should say outreach. Apologies about that. Uh, outreach efforts should include targeted outreach for vulnerable populations and overburdened communities. Uh, really focusing on those areas where there are, uh, combined multiple environmental harms and health impacts. Uh, to, especially to highly impacted communities. So really just making sure that that outreach reaches the people that we don't traditionally hear from. Uh, during plan updates. I heard you've already heard all about the electricity oiling unit, so we're gonna skip over that, uh, but let me know if anyone wants to come back to that. Did wanna talk about your existing transportation goals real quick. You currently have ten. Uh, we kind of recommend reducing those to about six, which is where we've landed as a first cut, uh, for discussion with staff and with the planning commission. Uh, so here are your current ones, uh, starts with safety and security, vibrant and healthy communities, mobility, investment, economic vitality, support for rail. Uh, support for aviation, support for marine infrastructure, regional transitions, and environmental impact. Uh, we've actually recommended, uh, uh, condensing from ten to six top level goals, and that really doesn't mean that any of those items are going away. Some of them are just gonna nest within each other and really give you more of that focus on those, uh, six top level goals. We find that more than about six goals is too many to focus on, and you end up not focusing on anything, so. Uh, really wanna think about how can we, uh, how can we streamline that, streamline that a little bit? So the goals that we've written so far, uh, and kind of are up for discussion, uh, are safety and security. Uh, reducing vehicle miles traveled, so that's, uh, kind of a new one, uh, per the state law. Uh, mobility, so really looking at mobility for all residents, uh, investment. Uh, really thinking about, uh, protecting the investments that have already been made and how we can be good stewards of the system, uh, that we already have. Uh, support for infrastructure, which does include that freight, rail, aviation, and marine needs. Uh, as well as economic vitality, and then finally is economic impact, so really thinking about, uh, economic impact in the natural environment. Uh, for Thurston County.
Got a question, the board of commissioner passenger.
Hello, uh, how is T four investment different from T five support for infrastructure?
Yeah, so really T four is really focused on that state of good repair almost. Uh, you'll probably see this a little bit more when you start to see the supporting actions. Uh, but the idea there is really more about, uh, thinking through how can we maintain the system we have already. Uh, versus the support for infrastructure is a little more focused on all of the different modes, freight, rail, aviation. Uh, and marine needs, and really focused more on that freight and goods movement, uh, piece of things, rather than the system as a whole. Uh, obviously, many of our roads are used for freight, freight and goods movement, but there are definitely some more specific things, and we wanna make sure that we don't, uh, leave out that freight and goods movement. Uh, is kind of a top level goal.
So I would recommend either changing the name or merging them.
We've got a couple more questions, unless you'd like us to hold questions?
Yep, no, find a.
Okay. We'll just go around the horn here.
Motion to, nevermind.
Okay. I have a question about, oh, sorry, we're gonna go around there and start with Commissioner Fishburg. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify, it looks to me like, uh, the support for rail, support for aviation, and support for marine infrastructure. Is all collapsed into support for infrastructure as a summary goal. Is that correct?
Correct, right now, yeah.
So when we started looking at the goals and remedies, that we call them underneath each of these. Goals, uh. Have those been also reduced, or do we maintain all the originals that were under? Rail. Aviation and marine.
So I believe those were kind of combined, uh, and kind of reworded, to rework them somewhat. Uh, I think you're referring to the actions and policies kind of under each goal, uh, that you'll see in the full draft TE that is in your packet. Uh, I, I'm a little fuzzy on, this is, this is a couple of months ago that we did this work. Uh, so I'm a little fuzzy on exactly what all we've combined, but our, our intention was not to just wholesale get rid of things. Uh, it was to streamline things a bit, uh, and we've paid a little more attention to the top level goals than we have to the actions underneath each of them. Still very much a work in progress and, and wanna get, uh, feedback from this group and from county staff as well.
Gotcha, yeah, I might, I think my concern is that we lose some granularity in those summaries.
Uh, my question's about P two, um. This is basically why we're titling it reduce vehicle miles traveled when the actual description seems to be about. Sustainability, and we hope that that also reduces vehicle mile traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. I mean, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
If I were picking a title there, I'm not sure I would pick that, or if I was gonna pick one of the two VMT or GHGs. I'd put GHGs as the title and hope that that reduces VMT, cause GM, GHG is. More important to me than than vehicle mile traveled, particularly with changing fuel systems. Yeah, that's just my thought process on that.
So maybe sustainability, uh, I, I was hearing.
Some, yeah, it, it, if. The description there puts VMT and GHGs basically as side effects of, of that, and so it doesn't make sense to make. Reduce VMT be the overarching goal. Just the way it's structured. That's just my thought process on that.
I appreciate that comment. Um, reducing VMT is. One of the steps towards reducing GHGs, but I, I would agree with you that reducing GHGs is a broader umbrella.
Yeah.
Totally stole my thunder.
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. I just, I, nice work.
I, I read it to, to be that. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions was the strategy for that was reducing vehicle miles traveled, and I think that there's multiple strategies. To reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and so that, that P two is, um.
Makes more sense with GHG.
Yeah.
VMT.
And I, I wanna be clear, we'll, we'll go back with county staff and talk about that, and these are great. I'm, I'm taking kind of copious notes on your guys' thoughts. These are great. Um, one comment, as we go back to county staff, we'll have to talk about if we wanted to reframe that to reduce GHGs. Or if it's to sustainability, and the only thing that's working through my mind is that, you know, they're definitely wanting to keep these to be transportation actions. So when we go to reduce GHGs, of course, that has a very broad umbrella, that could include a lot of elements that transcend transportation. So we'll bring that back to staff and get their thoughts on that.
Reduce emissions.
I guess I would, I would think that there's a lot, th- there's a lot of things within transportation that could be done to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, not just reducing vehicle miles traveled.
Even if it was transportation GHG, it's a little wordy, but it's at least clearer.
Yeah.
It might be assumed it's in the transportation.
I would agree, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably more of a, the vehicle miles is probably a better policy. Uh, but we'll go to Commissioner Bartlett and then. Back to Commissioner Pesner.
Um, I have two questions. Um, first or like first, uh, just mobility, um, provide mobility for all residents. I, I'm a little fuzzy on, on what. What that means. Um. In this context, I mean, I know that all of these are broader like mu- that are umbrellas that will have like sub-goals and sub-goals and sub-goals. So like, I know that there's a lot of meat. Uh, below that. Um, but it's another one, I, and this isn't your fault, this was originally, but I'm just. If, if that's about uh, making sure that everyone had, like, if that's about accessibility. Um, I think it should be labeled accessibility. If it's about uh, making sure that everyone has a Tesla, then it should be about that, but like. I'd like some, some clarification there. Um, and then the other one, my other uh, uh, comment was just on economic impact. It's just, it's, it's another one of those. It's like. It's a title and then there's uh, there's a, there's text underneath ever between should meet. Um. This, uh, I love what that goal is. And I do think there's something clever about talking about the ec- about, about uh, environment. In, in an economic sense, but if we're going to be talking about the environment, I would like us to talk about the environment. If we're talking about biodiversity, specifically in the context of roads. Where uh, we've talked about how road crossings and things like that affect it. We, and how road construction affects biodiversity. We should talk about biodiversity and use those words. I think it's fun to talk about in uh, environment from an environment, uh, from an economic context. But if we want to talk about environment, let's label that.
Yeah, I would really actually. Like to double down on that. Um, to, I, is that just a error that it says economic impact and so environmental impact? Because otherwise it's presuming like are there all sorts of different economic, like valuation systems you could be using and all of them have their problems. And you're having to make this kind of logical jump between the environment and economy. Is, is that just an error?
It seems like a bit of a mismatch now that I'm reading it back. It seemed okay at the time when we put it together, but let me take a look back at how we were trying to combine things and something might've gotten lost in the shuffle there. Uh, so we'll, we'll make sure that uh, makes more sense and kind of flows together. There might be some environmental aspects of the economic impact or vice versa, but we'll figure out. Uh, which one is the, the better top level goal there and, and kind of realign things.
Yeah, if I could just finish one, one last bit would be to say that like, I do like that we're talking about people in an environmental context, but we're talking about like the ability for people to be functionally working. That seems like more, it's, it's more in that, that uh, infrastructure and investment. Um. Side of it, like the more economic side of it. So maybe splitting, maybe a friendly, a friendly suggestion would be to split out the, 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 the work aspect to that. And then. I really, and this is just going to always be my, my little like hobby horse on here, but if we can get something specifically about. The environment from its own context. So biodiversity rather than like service, ecosystem services or something like that. I'd really like that.
So one of the things I think we're struggling with here is that we've got goals and we don't see their intended policies, which I think would clarify a lot of this. So I think we might be spending a lot of time on something that would be clear. Um, if you see the rest of it here.
Commissioner Bartlett stole my thunder, but um, you just tell us that when our sheriff goes on chases and wrecks, does that impact VMT?
No answer necessary.
Some greenhouse gas credits.
Are we recycling the wreckage?
Daniel, I hope you enjoy our planning.
I think, uh, I think technically if the truck is on the back of a wrecker, I think that halves your VMT because it's two vehicles moving as one at that point.
Gee, from the extra mass, I'm concerned him.
Thank you for engaging with us.
Of course. Anything else?
Take it away.
Okay. Uh, thanks. We really, this is actually really the meat of what we want to get from this uh, group. So uh, the rest of tonight will be a little bit more about talking about uh, some emerging transportation ideas. Uh, but really appreciate all that uh, lively discussion. Uh, it's very useful for us as we think about how to realign your goals. Uh, so a few different topics within emerging transportation ideas. And again, this is uh, kind of a, a. All the hits from the past decade of, you know, how we've thought about uh, transportation, safety, uh, engineering and planning uh, differently over the past decade. Uh, we'll talk about, about safety, multimodal considerations and level of service standards, uh, congestion, state of good repair and then sustainability. Uh, so first up is uh, more of the safe systems approach that we're transitioning to as a industry of transportation planners and engineers. Uh, this comes all the way from the Federal Highway Administration, all the way down to Washshot's Target Zero and then into local safety plans. Uh, which the county is currently working on a comprehensive safety action plan. Uh, this really is thinking about safety in a different way than what we've thought about safety in the past, uh, especially as engineers. Uh, the six principles of the safe system approach are that uh, no death or serious injury uh, is acceptable. Uh, humans make mistakes as drivers, uh, and we're not anywhere close to autonomous vehicles driving us all around. Uh, humans are vulnerable. Uh, responsibility is shared uh, amongst all road users. Uh, safety is proactive and redundancy is crucial. Uh, really noting that, you know, when we see crashes happen, it's not because one thing happened, it's because several things happened. Uh, and kind of. Uh, we call it the Swiss cheese model of accidents or crashes in that all of these holes in the Swiss, multiple layers of Swiss cheese lined up for there to be at an actual crash. Uh, so we need to think about how we can be uh, more redundant in our safe system. Uh, the elements within the safe system uh, approach are safe road users. So thinking about safety for uh, people on bikes, people walking, people in cars, people rolling. Uh, thinking about safe vehicles, both for people inside and outside of those vehicles, thinking about safe speeds. Uh, we know really the higher the speed, the more likely people are to be uh, seriously injured or killed. Thinking about safe roadway designs and then post-crash care. Uh, so a little bit outside of what we normally think about when we think about. Uh, transportation engineering and designing a roadway and, you know, designing guardrails and things like that, but really thinking holistically. Uh, from start to finish about the entire system. Uh, multimodal considerations and MML OS, uh, really have to think more closely about uh, not just auto. Uh, level of service or, you know, what's the congestion level that people experience while driving around? But really think about pedestrian, bike and transit level of service. Uh, you're required to have uh, levels of service for all of these. Uh, it's still got to be context is context sensitive though. Uh, obviously what happens on Martin Way within the UGA in a very dense area is very different than what happens, you know. Outside of Grand Mound, uh, or Tenino. So really want to think about what's the, what's the right level of facility for different uh, areas within the county? Based on that context sensitivity. And then also thinking about transit, both rural transit and inner city transit. How are they operating and how are you coordinating uh, as a county with them? Obviously the county is not uh, you know, so directly uh, operating that service. They're not directly operating inner city transit, but how can you advocate and encourage uh, the type of transit service that uh, you need within the county and the UGAs? Really one thing that we're thinking about, and this is not included uh, yet in the draft TE or, or maybe it is, uh, actually. Taking that back, we've started to include a, a draft level of traffic stress methodology. Uh, which really looks at uh, how facilities, not only is there a facility or not, which is what we used to look at. Uh, for multimodal level of service, but now looking more at how safe and comfortable of a, of a facility is provided. Uh, so it ranges from an LTS one, which is a good grade. That's something that, you know, most people would be happy to bike along with their five-year-old. Uh, that's really going to be more of the separated shared use path or trail that's not directly on the roadway. Uh, all the way up to LTS four, that's, you know, either no bike lane or a bike lane on a high-speed, high-volume roadway. Uh, where there are going to be very few users that feel safe uh, and confident enough to bike along that roadway. Very similar for pedestrians, uh, really depending on your speeds and how far uh, kind of whether you're providing facilities, whether that's a sidewalk or a separated sidewalk or trail. Uh, and what the speeds and volumes are on that roadway. Uh, when you think about uh, different pedestrian and bicycle level of traffic stress uh, considerations. Other things, uh, we obviously cannot really build our way out of congestion. Texas has tried it. They just say, keep saying one more lane, one more lane, one more lane. And then you see these monstrosities of like sixteen lane-wide freeways that are still just as congested as before they added that last lane. Uh, really, uh, other things to think about when you add capacity is that may actually be decreasing safety. Uh, we saw during the pandemic when there was a little less congestion on our freeways that we actually saw the safety record. Uh, get way worse because that extra speed that we saw on our freeways in the region actually led to a lot more. Uh, dangerous driving and a lot more crashes, uh, especially serious injury and fatality uh, crashes. Uh, really, uh, things that we want to think about before just building more lanes is how can we operate the system more efficiently? Are there certain increase, a certain congestion hotspots that we do need to address? Uh, is it a different uh, intersection control? Uh, is it changing a, a side street stop or an always stop controlled intersection to a roundabout or things like that that actually help? Uh, both on capacity and safety. So really thinking about it holistically and not just going first to just adding more capacity uh, is our only answer.
Increase broadband.
Yeah, broadband. I think uh, if there's one thing the pandemic proved, it's what's the maximum amount of, amount of people that people. What's the maximum amount that people are going to telework? Uh, I think we probably have hit peak telework by this point. Uh, as far as kind of seeing how many people can do their job remotely, uh, and what's that, what that's going to look like.
I, I would argue it's not how many people can, it's how many uh, bosses, CEOs and cities will allow.
Yeah, I will say Daniel's correct and we saw peak and we're seeing it revert, but.
Yeah. For sure. Um. Really, uh, think, uh, last thing on congestion, then we'll get into just a couple more topics. More lanes may not always be the answer, but really thinking about. Are there ways that we can encourage more active transportation or more public transportation? Again, in a context sensitive way, uh, what happens in more rural portions of the county are not going to work in the more popular, uh, uh, in the more populated areas. State of good repair, uh, really thinking much more closely about this rather than just uh, building new facilities, really thinking about how do we maintain what we've got right now. Uh, this is the uh, Washington's infrastructure uh, report card put together by the American Society of Civil Engineers. Uh, overall, we're getting a C, which I don't know about you. I wasn't super happy with Cs in school. I got a few of them. Uh, let's not talk about differential equations. Uh, but really thinking about how can we improve the system that we have and keep it in good working order? Uh, and save money in the long run, uh, if we're able to maintain things as we go. Finally, uh, on emerging ideas, sustainability, really thinking about the things we were talking about earlier, uh, that's climate change. Uh, that's thinking about disasters. So whether that's an earthquake or a flood. Uh, thinking about equity, uh, and thinking about the economy and how we build a more sustainable transportation system that supports all of those things. Uh, thinking about, you know, if uh, there's either a natural disaster or a man-made disaster, like say a. Uh, train derailment that closes down I five, how does that impact the rest of the system? And how do we think about uh, that entire system as a whole? Ever. Just a few more slides here. The current plan uh, really is a good firm foundation for this update. Uh, the pandemic has changed how and where we work and travel, uh, although some of that, as you were saying, is kind of starting to revert to the mean. Uh, but there are still, I think the state is pretty committed to telework. We've seen a lot of uh, state offices in Tom Water and in. In Thurston County, uh, kind of largely emptied out uh, due to telework or kind of hybrid work at least. Uh, and really thinking about different changes to transportation priorities at the federal, state and local level since the last update. Uh, the new plan, uh, really will incorporate the changes we've discussed as well as input from the commission stakeholders and the community. And then wrapping up here, next steps, uh, barring any further discussion, uh, which we're happy to take. Uh, here was just the ways to engage, uh, that I think you've seen in other presentations as part of the TE update.
Thank you. All right, um, anything before we close ourselves out? Or anything you need from us?
I think, uh, we'll go back and look at the goals again. Really appreciate all the feedback there. Uh, if you do have any comments on kind of the draft TE as it stands now that was in your packet, please do send those on to. Uh, Andrew and Ashley and they will get them to us. Uh, we're uh, working together to get that uh, kind of full. Uh, full comprehensive plan update to commission and to the public. So, uh, really appreciate any feedback.
Uh, you look really young. Have you seen the movie Singles?
Singles, it rings the bell. I don't, my pop culture is uh, my pop culture references is pretty, are pretty bad.
I, I'm going to go with Zoom features here. I, I don't know if he has, I'm not wearing lipstick. So it'd be a filter.
There is a touch at my appearance thing. It makes some weird choices sometimes.
I'm, I might have touched up my appearance on, I'm not sure. I, I don't even know anymore.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn?
Stealing my thunder once again.
Yes, of course.
We have a motion and second to adjourn.
Actually, I had something I would. Yeah, just real quick. Did anybody go to the board's briefing today?
I did.
I ended up watching it on accident, so. Yeah, I couldn't, all I could see was Mr. Pettit in the audience. I couldn't see anybody else.
Are you, are you talking about the LRA briefing or the budget briefing?
In LTA.
In LTA, I was there for LTA and LRA, but I must've been sitting off camera, which is, yeah.
Off over there somewhere.
Yeah.
You can only really see like first couple of chairs in the corner there.
Yeah.
Do you like an update? What the.
I think it'd be good to discuss.
Okay.
I, I know what they said.
I can do L, yeah, that's right.
I, I retract my motion in order to.
All right, so.
I really did try.
I just, I can do LTA real quick unless you want to.
I didn't see that one.
Oh, okay. I'll do.
I got a text that, and I got to the very end.
Oh, okay.
And then, so I stayed for L, L R A.
So uh, this planning commission, um, last year spent a lot of time looking at uh, agric- updates to the agricultural zone. Um, largely in spot, in response to a deal from an outside organization called Futurewise. Um, did a bunch of mapping analysis following board direction and looks like we can update our list of agricultural soils without any changes to the map. Um, we will be continuing on with all kinds of other programs, um, intended to support agriculture here in the county. But not necessarily using the zoning tool, um, as a way to protect our land. And so we have gotten the okay to move forward with public hearing on that, um, with final action, um, by the board in December. Um, just really quick, it did go to a briefing. It was an email briefing, but we also got the thumbs up to move the Grand Mound West projects forward, Womoski and Black Lake Quarry. Those were the UGA expansions, which also came through. Past planning commissions. We have heard concerns from the Department of Commerce specifically on Womoski, so we're still working through that. Um.
Could you say that part again, please?
Uh, Department of Commerce ha- continues to have concerns with whether the Womoski proposal, the twenty-six acres of additional residential land is needed.
Commerce doesn't like that one.
Commerce wants lots more analysis to be done. Um, so anyway, it's, we're, we're working through it. Um, those all had. Differing votes from the planning commission. Happy to chat with any of the commissioners that were around then, um, about sort of. What has been learned since those votes, because there has been a lot of new information. Um, and yeah, and I'll let. I'll let one of you update on LRA. What has been learned since those votes, cause there has been a lot of new information, um, and yeah, and I'll let, I'll let one of you update on L R A.
Well, I might not have remembered L R A exactly what happened, but they did have a discussion on it and their, their main, their main decision point today. Was whether or not they would hold a public hearing considering uh the L R A. Adoption, and they did decide that they'll hold the public hearing, and I want to think that the way that it ended up was that there was basically. Two sets of considerations to hold, to hold the public hearing on, one was the planning commission recommendations. And the other was the recommendations coming out of the P A O's office. And if I understood correctly, the board voted to go to public hearing with the P A O office recommendation only. Is that correct?
Yes. There were updates to the definition. Uh, staff did look into inspections and business licensing, and we did get direction from the board to continue looking at. Some way of being able to more proactively go out there and inspect. Um, privately run residential facilities, but those would be changes to Title twenty-six for code enforcement or, and or. The section of the code that does business licenses, and so moving forward the package of zoning code pieces. While asking staff to still research some of the items of the planning commission recommended that would fall outside those.
And that was the reason I wanted it brought up, because I just wanted to make sure everybody, to, for everybody to know that the board has chosen. The attorney's version over ours.
I, I should note that. Unless I misfit, I don't, I have never read the attorney's version, I don't know what it is. And I guess we will find out when we go to public hearing and those documents are released. But it, I do find it um concerning that uh we're moving forward without the public having seen any of those, especially.
They were attached to the briefing today.
Cause the P A O's comments for each of those were attached to the briefing, but the meeting that I attended.
I was there.
That I was not allowed to make any comments after we submitted the letter. Uh, they did not, they had a uh.
Executive session.
An executive session with the P A O before that on that subject, which was inappropriate, which we commented about at the next. Uh, meeting that we had here, but. Yeah, that's, that's what you're talking about. That's what I was talking about too, what did the P O, P A O tell the commissioners in an executive session when there shouldn't have been an executive session? Cause there was no liability, there was no lawsuit filed, there was no litigation, therefore there should not have been an executive session.
I tend to agree.
So the attorney's general's office is not sharing opinions.
It's funny you say that.
Is appreciated.
Yes.
All right.
They are, I, I will, sorry, one other thing, they are still pursuing as a board legislative solutions. And so the other thing they have asked staff to do is get this on the books so that there is a permit process, because we don't currently have one. And then with the acknowledgement that if there are any changes in the upcoming legislature, that we will be updating.
But actually, the problem is, is that the P A O could go to the A G and say, this is what we want to do. You have a problem with it. Okay, because there's really no specific legislation that says we can't do what we asked them to do. There's nothing specifically that says that, okay? So they could have, our uh prosecuting attorney could have gone to the Attorney General's Office. To his point of contact and said, listen, this is what we want to do, do you have a problem with it? If you've got a problem with it, please tell us what that is, and then maybe we can find a workaround, but that did not happen. That's my point.
Sorry.
I think that's a valid point, and there will be a public hearing now.
Reader recommendations back into the public here.
They did, the, they did acknowledge that those are, like, those are recommendations that they want. That they want to pursue with changes in the legis- in the legislation, so.
They'll pursue if the legislature says do it, it isn't really, we want to pursue it.
Yeah, the legislation is very vague, and that's what we, that's what we pointed out. It was so vague that there was a lot of leeway there, which is what we wanted to point out. And they decided to go with the P A O's recommendation, because the P A O did not want to take it forward and address it to the A G, that's my.
I think it should also be noted that because the P A O did not want to move forward with the planning commission recommendation. That those recommendations from the planning commission were not really discussed in the work sessions. The B O C C did not contemplate them in an open meeting. Not all of them, I should say, some of them probably did come up.
Yeah.
But. Stealing your thunder again, Joel, you have a second?
You can second it, so, second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any votes? All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Long day.